All right. Now, we're going to move on to our second agenda item, which is the second hottest topic in our second, as in just number two in order, just as important as the homeless issue. And that is to hear from our police department about the crime reduction plan. City of Tacoma Police Chief Avery Moore will be providing a presentation on the Tacoma Police Department Crime Reduction Plan that will outline the development of a strategic plan to reduce violent crimes in the city of Tacoma. And I would now like to call on Tacoma Police Chief Avery Moore to begin the presentation. Chief?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. First, let me apologize for not being in person. I'm actually battling a stomach virus, so just being responsible and kind of isolating myself. So, I would much rather be in person, but again, I'm getting through this stomach virus. So, thank you for being understanding. Next slide, please. So, today, I'm going to talk about the crime plan. The agenda items are the current state that we're currently in, principles and prerequisites. And then, I'm going to talk specifically about how this plan is really tailor-made, scientifically-based, evidence-based for Tacoma, based on our data that we have here. Next slide, please. So, we recognize in the police department that we are a vital part of public safety. We recognize that we have to lead those efforts to actually reduce crime, but we also recognize that we can't do it alone. I've been an advocate for community involvement, calling on everybody. I believe without a doubt that crime is everybody's business, so we welcome you. We welcome your input. We welcome your ideas, concepts, because we're going to have to do this together. Next slide, please. So, here's a graph of where we are today. As you can see, and it goes back to April of last year, you can see the increases, the dips, the increases and the dips. But toward the latter part of last year, and even the beginning of this year, we really had a steep uptick in crime. A lot of reasons for that, you know, COVID is one, the jail being restrictive is one, House Bill 1310 is one, and you're well aware of all of those. But I really want you to take notice of the peak and then how we have a decline. That decline is due to several factors. One I want to point out is the House bill was changed, so that was a benefit. Two, the men and women of this police department are 100% dedicated to making this city safe. We recognize that we can't do it alone, but we make no excuses. Our motto is what we can do, not what we can't. We try to win one day at a time, understanding that we're not going to win every day. But if we can win one day, and what that looks like for clarity, having one less victim, that is our goal. We actually, and I'm actually more interested in reducing the number of victims than the number. The number, as far as percentages, there's always an exposition behind them, and that is victims. So, that's the goal of this crime plan, is to reduce the number of victims and to include everybody in that process. Next slide, please. So, as we go through this crime plan, one of our main things, again, is not only reducing the number of victims, but minimizing that unintended harm. So, before I get to that, I just want to point out that as we go through this crime plan, when we lay it out and actually have it completely implemented, we do recognize that, again, it is evidence-based from our evidence and from our data here. And in that, we recognize that just across the nation, that crime has gone up in a lot of cities, whether it be big or small cities, large, we recognize it's going up. So, when I dug into the data, about 5% of all street segments and intersects account for 50 to 75% of the crime. And why that's significant is, is that when you listen to media and other outlets, you would think that crime is throughout the entire city. That's not true, and Tacoma is no different. Crime is really isolated to those meta-locations, real small locations, by a small, significant portion of that population. And as you can see, when I have, crime is disproportionately committed by a small number of people. That's all based on the data nationally, as well as the data from Tacoma. And the most prolific is that 10%. And if you remember, I discussed that even in my interview, it's that 10% of those prolific offenders that are causing the majority of the crime. So, that's kind of the genesis of the crime plan with that information relied on heavenly. Next slide, please. So, as I've said, it's going to be evidence-based. It's tailored to fit the identified issues in Tacoma as it relates to violent crime. And although the focus primarily is going to be violent crime, we recognize that there's a direct correlation between nonviolent crime, i.e. property crime. So, as I go through and tell you exactly what we're going to be doing, I just want you to keep that in mind. We're not going to ignore the low-level crimes, but we are going to focus on those violent crimes that have that immediate impact, that really cast fear throughout the city of Tacoma. In this plan, we're going to make sure, again, being sensitive to certain areas that we're not overpolicing. So, you're not going to see the stop and frisk that is usually associated with policing, nor will you see a zero-tolerance policing perspective. We are going to keep the communities informed of what we're doing. We're going to actually get better at getting that information from the communities. Since I've been here, I've met with several community members, groups, et cetera, listening, understanding what their issues are and hearing them. So, in this plan, we will address that, but none of this is to start and then stop. Next slide, please. So, the first thing we're going to do, our plan is going to have three phases, an immediate, mid, and long-term strategy. What that looks like is, we're going to do, well, first, let me tell you how we actually came up with the plan. So, let me back up a little bit, I apologize. I reached out to the University of Texas, two criminologists there who happen to have their doctor's degree in criminology. They are experts when it comes to crime analysis, from the perspective of really identifying locations where crime is being committed, the times of days, the hours, the people. So, that's what they do. That's their expertise. They're very good in it. Had a relationship with them in my former job. And again, I felt like they were what we needed here in Tacoma to really address the concerns of the residents of Tacoma. Next slide, please. So, Phase 1 would be hotspot policing. And where this is going to be different is, going back to a few things that I've said, typically, when you hear hotspot policing, you think about zero tolerance. You think about dragnet policing. The way we're going to do it here is nothing like that. The main emphasis will be high visibility. And what that will look like is, once those geographical areas are identified through our analysis, we will have higher visible officers in those areas. The way it's going to work is, once we identify the times, the dates, et cetera, we'll be able to be specific in how we deploy our resources to those specific areas. Again, although we're going to focus on violent crime, this high-visibility approach will have a direct relationship to property crime, because wherever we deploy our officers, what their instructions will be and the expectation, they turn on their overhead lights for 15 minutes of those high-volume crime hours, on those high-volume days. They'll turn on their overhead lights to be highly visible, based on whether they can get out of the car, engage with the community there, simply by saying, "Hi, I'm Officer Moore. I'm out here tonight. How can I help you?" So, it's really going to be a hands-on, personal approach. In addition to that, they won't be just static. And what I mean by that is, if a crime is being committed in their presence, then they will handle that crime accordingly. Next slide, please. The second phase, which will be incorporated about, about four to six months after we start the first phase, will be based on really engaging with our local partnership, our state partnerships, and doing things like that real focused on those violent offenders, where they're gathering, where they're planning, their criminal activities, and we'll be addressing those. For example, drug locations, locations where we know through intel that they're selling weapons and so forth. So, we'll address that from more of a partnership perspective, FBI, DEA, et cetera. Next slide, please. And the third part, which will be six months after that, is focused deterrence. And that's where we'll be going in the community. It will require not only policing, but also require our other partners throughout the city. City government will work together collaboratively to come up with focused deterrent mechanisms. For example, I would love, and I mentioned this before, to start a first offender program for youth, because I don't believe that a person that's young, that doesn't have the mental capacity to really understand what they're doing and what that will lead to, should actually destroy their life. So, if there's opportunities based on severity of crime that we can give them, to point them in another direction, to provide them with another resource, that's where that would come into play. Next slide, please. Also along that, we can talk about blight. We can talk about how, again, we can go in to those areas that may need more lighting, that may need more fencing, that may need more, whatever it is, to help that business owner or that residential owner help us, help them, us working together to make the area safe. Next slide, please. So, here's the tentative timeline. We've begun the hotspot policing kind of softly after the laws changed, and we've had some success with that. That's where you saw the decrease in crime. Now, let me say this, so it's clear. I'm not saying we've had an overall decrease in crime to where there's nothing else to worry about. What I'm saying is, we've won some days, and it's due to the men and women really working hard, again, to their commitment as it relates to being committed to making Tacoma safe. Community and stakeholder input, I've already started that. You know, it was my third day on the job, in May. I went to that summit. I heard what the citizens, what the residents had to say, and I took note of it. I've been to several businesses, I've met with several people, and I listened, and I make mental notes of it. And all of that has been given to the people who are going to help us with the crime plan. And then, the last one, again, is just about bringing all this together. So, what makes this plan unique is typically, an agency will do hotspot policing solo, or they will do place network solo, or focused deterrence solo. It's rare, and I only know of one police department that's actually combined all three efforts simultaneously, which we will do here. And I believe that as we get through the plan, and it'll be finalized in June, and I'll come back with you with the final product of that plan, we'll be able to make the impact that we want to make to make Tacoma the safest city in the country. Next slide, please. Again, these are just some more timeline items. The timeline is aggressive, but it's aggressive because I hear the residents of Tacoma, they want to be safe, and they have that right, and it's our job, not solely, but we will definitely take the lead to make Tacoma the safest city we can make it. Next slide, please. So, Madam Mayor, I went through that, because I know you have already had the PowerPoint, and I really wanted to allow a lot of time for question and answers, so I'm available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Chief. And if we can take the PowerPoint presentation down so we can see that, fully see the chief on the screen, that would be helpful. And then, I will open it up for questions from the council. And Chief, we hope you're feeling better. We miss that you're not here, but totally understand. Any comments, questions from the council? All right, Deputy Mayor, start us off.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. I think that we're all excited to see this, just because crime has been such an issue for us to all contend with on a regular basis. And so, I appreciate your work and the work of the department. I want to note that, I just want to note some positives, quite frankly, rather than, I trust your plan, I'm looking forward to your plan, but I just want to note that I know that, I've heard neighbors talk about seeing higher visibility of police in the 4th District, and I know that we have a new sector commander who's coming with a great deal of enthusiasm, and we adored our old sector commander, so that's a really high bar. And I wanted to note that, because I think that kind of relationship building is kind of what we all want to get to or back to in a lot of ways. And so, I'm seeing some of this come through. I just want to ask a question really quick on Slide 11 about the blight and disorder. It's something that in the 4th District, we're constantly struggling with, and so I know a lot about blight and the broken-window theorem. But am I understanding correctly that basically, when things are greener, like when there's more plants, there's less crime?
So, it's more of an analogy. And what it means is, is that if you can change the optics of an environment, that does have a direct impact on the crime in that area. So, I often think of the open, or the broken-window theory. If you live with the window broken, then you'll find more windows are broken, and you'll see a deterioration. But if you immediately fix that window, then it could go in the opposite direction. So, when you think about it, again, that's just an analogy, but there is a direct correlation between how a neighborhood, how a business area looks, and the crime associated with it.
No, I totally appreciate that. Somebody who lives near and has addressed Gault Middle School for the last decade and its broken windows, I'm actually delighted most of it's coming down right now for that very reason. I asked because it seems like there's been higher violent crime rates in East and South Tacoma, so 4 and 5 and 3 really over the years, and it's also some of the lowest tree canopy in the South Sound region. And I just wondered if there was a correlation. So, maybe and maybe not, it's more of a visibility thing, but I just was looking to see if that was a, an established fact. And I might use it that way anyway, and I'll apologize in advance for that, because I like trees. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Great. Any additional comments? Okay, great. Well, with Councilmember Walker, followed by Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. As Deputy Mayor said, we're very excited to see this plan, and even more excited to see it in action. One thing I really appreciate about this is the, how things are connected, and I appreciate, and I think it's important that we focus on violent crime, but I love that you noted that that will have an impact on property crime, among other things, and this tie-in with the green space. I know you noted blight as well, and I know there are a number of nonprofits that we've worked with in the past who do great work, as well as our own department, art department, that's not the name of it, but the folks that do all the great work on art in our city have done an amazing job in that area as well. So, looking forward to continuing to support those organizations and departments. One, just note, a lot of us spent a good portion of Saturday doing litter pickup around the city, and I would imagine that there's also a connection there in terms of blight. And we were noting that there are so many vacant buildings, and that as soon as you see a vacant building, you also see either an increase of the amount of trash that's left outside of it. It appears there's more people hanging around, potentially up to no good, that there are more broken windows, you know, that there is a correlation. And I'm wondering, I guess I just want to sort of confirm that with vacant buildings, and then, just as a larger comment to, for us to spend some time and energy addressing that. And I'm guessing City Manager that that's an NCS, that's NCS work, but would love to know more about where we are on that and how we can support more.
Thank you, Mayor. If you want, would you like me to hop into Councilmember? Really, those are cross-functional teams that would be looking at those things, and I think you're going to see some of that coming through in the budget cycle and be able to consider some things that will contribute to alleviating some of those issues.
Great, thank you. And I'll just, again, say thank you, Chief, for the work and for acknowledging the crossover between departments and the council, and the department, and the community. So, thanks, looking forward to continuing the work.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Daniels?
Snuck up on me. Thank you for this presentation, Chief. I wanted, you mentioned a lot about data, and I appreciate how much has gone into this plan and how much we note to data, because I know that, from my understanding, that's the best way to, I guess, to help us get to be a more transformed city and a more equitable city. And I'm curious if there are ways, well, we've had a history in the past of doing some unethical things as we try to police better and as we try to reduce crime. And I'm curious if there are ways that you've thought about, you did mention some of the different ways, some of the different things that we weren't going to be doing that had been noted from the 90s and 2000s. But I'm curious if there's just like a general theme of equity of how you want to roll this out as we kind of think about our systems and transformation, that you maybe want the community to know. And then, also, well, I guess I'll start there, because I do have one more question.
Yes, ma'am. So, I don't want us to be under any illusion that there's not going to be any enforcement, because there absolutely is. There are people that are, and I'm going to use the word from the homeless presentation, that are preying on victims. That's why we have victims. Crime, and it's in my PowerPoint, is not random. Typically, it's very determined, very precise, and it's based on a lot of different factors. But my point is, is that there is going to be an enforcement piece to this. How we make sure that we're not enforcing in that dragnet, zero-tolerance perspective is making sure there's clear expectations given. They have been, and they will continue to be. I'm not interested in trying to police everybody. That's why the stats are so important, and the way this plan is developed is so important. This is about the behavior of certain people in the community, hopefully through high-visibility that will deter them. But if that does not, there will be arrests made. There's no way around it. You can't have an effective crime plan and say you're not going to do any enforcement. But again, from my perspective, that's not going to be the message that's sent out, meaning that I'm not going to say, "Hey, go out, do hotspot policing, arrest everybody, write as many tickets as you can," because that's when you get into that situation where maybe there's some unethical or even some illegal things being done. It's about leadership, giving clear expectations, and my expectations is that we get better at policing. And you can do that simply by saying, "Hi, I'm Officer Moore. How can I help you today?" If you're going to be out there under the umbrella of being highly visible, then you can be polite and professional and engaging as well. So, that's how we're going to do it, just keep it in the ear of my officers, that these are the expectations. And again, when there's an arrest that needs to be made, certainly, we're going to make that arrest. But our ultimate goal is to change behavior through high-visibility.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Councilmember Rumba brought up a conversation that we had yesterday with FIRE and kind of them talking about where, some suggestions that they had for us to kind of couple with their needs. And one of the things that I think is important, as you mentioned, Tacoma becoming one of the safest places to be in America, or the safest place to be in America. I think about how, you know, the crime part, the crime plan is really, you're a part of this, right? But how do we support you in that? I guess my guess would be like having a Tacoma that is economically secure, and then also a Tacoma that is housed. But if, from your perspective, what are some things that we can do to couple with this crime plan that would really help you?
So, number one is messaging. I know that you were given some bullets to help message. That's important, because crime is important to the victim or to the person that it impacts. And that is the most important issue for them, period. If I'm the victim, that's the most important. I'm not interested necessarily about all the other stuff that police has to do. Again, our focus is going to be violent crime, simply because it's the most severe when it comes to the impact that it has on any economy. So, messaging, help the constituents to understand that we're not ignoring any of the lower-level crimes, we're not not responding to calls because we're doing nothing. We're working every day as hard as we can. Can we get better in areas? Absolutely. But we're going to continue to answer the priority calls as they come in, and that's priority 1, 2, 3, and 4. We're going to answer them as quickly as we can, because that's what we are responsible to do, and we take that responsibility seriously. And we're also going to try to deter and arrest those who are violating the law. You know, again, I don't want this plan to, where people think they're going to get a ticket, because you're not. It's not a free pass. If you are out here and you're causing havoc on our residents, you're going to be held accountable. And if we can't catch you today, we will catch you tomorrow, et cetera. So, again, this message, this is a, an aggressive plan that's going to require all of us working together and supporting it, not just privately, but openly. So, again, messaging would be important to me at this point.
I appreciate that. And I think the last question I have might be for City Manager. It might be for you, too. I know we talked about, and I think in the next nine months or so, we're going to be doing some more data collection, and I know it's going to be more work on your part, but I'm curious what that entails and how we can use that to make sure that, that this crime plan or what we're doing is rolled out equitably. That's a piece of it, right? I think...
Thank you, Councilmember. I think your references to a resolution passed by the City Council last year requiring that we put together a means of collecting demographic data related to our enforcement. And yes, we have a pilot that's underway on some software that will assist us in that data collection, and that pilot is underway at this time. So, we'll have more to report on that later, Councilmember.
Thank you.
And Councilmember, I would just ask that you would remember this and give it some really good consideration. This plan is not about people. This plan is really about behavior. So, that's why I didn't mention demographics at all. We're out here to change behavior, and primarily, we want to change it through high-visibility, pleasant engagements, but sometimes, that's going to require that we make an arrest, and we absolutely will. But again, it's about behavior and not people.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Councilmember Heinz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief Moore, for the presentation. I think one of my questions would be, and I, and then, I'll ask a question first before I talk about what I like about the plan. You talked about your work in Dallas before you came to City of Tacoma, and about working with the community, and I really think the community input as part of this process is important. Do you want to describe maybe kind of how you did that in your previous city, like how you brought the community into the conversation around some, a plan of addressing crime?
Sure. Way we did it is, we set up listening sessions, which I'm going to do here. The goal is, once I get my internal team all here, is we're going to go out to the community. My plans right now is, once a week, we're not going to recreate the will in that, I'll actually call the meeting. I'm going to go to meetings, me or my staff, and we're going to listen. We're going to ask for input, we're going to share what we're doing, what's working, what's not working. Something that I didn't mention out loud, but it's written in the crime plan, is, this crime plans will be reevaluated every 90 days, actually even more than that, but at least 90 days will reevaluate it. And that's where the community input, our partners' input, officer input, just everybody's input will be considered, and we'll look at if we're being impactful in the areas that the crime analyst unit has designated for us to be. So...
Yeah. No, thank you. That was something... Yeah. No, thank you. That was something you said during your interview that I really appreciated was the idea that going to communities, saying this is the plan, but the plans can always change based on the evidence and what's happening on the ground. So I'm glad to see that's going to come in part of this. Just comments, Chief Moore, I really appreciate that it's, that there's phases to the plan, that there's a short term, medium term, long term plan to kind of address this, because we all know that addressing crime has both a short term, a moderate term, and a long term way to address it. And similar to our conversation around homelessness, right, if we ignore the short term, for the long term, there'll be a lot of victims in the process. And, and we all know that being a victim of crime does not just impact the victim, but ripples out through communities and has real impact. So by addressing those short term issues and really helping and caring about victims of crime, we'll be able to kind of turn some of that around and remove some community impact that would otherwise not be there. I really like the components of how do we also look at the place where crime is happening and make it a place that is less likely to have crime, especially not just kind of the SEPT head, but also how do we invest in these neighborhoods to make them more, you know, places that people want to be. So looking at how we remove graffiti, looking how we remove light, looking at fixing streetlights or planting trees. I also think the, going down long term, you know, from the council side, what can we do to help community groups in those areas that are experiencing spikes of crime to help kind of do the work to make their communities safer? I think that should be something we should be talking about is, maybe there's a way we can fund some of that. Because I would tell you, Chief Moore, that you are the professional in the police department, and I trust your assessment of how to best lead the department in responding to the crime. I would just encourage my colleagues to think about what we can do as a council to provide the support around the work that you and your officers are doing. So what can we do to provide funding for community groups? What can we do to provide funding for public works, neighborhood community services, to make sure that when your officers are helping communities address spikes in violent crime, that we are also coming along to invest in those communities and make them a safer place? Because we believe everybody in Tacoma should live in a safe neighborhood. So I'm very excited to get behind this and do what I can to support that. So I would ask Chief Moore is just to go forward with this. Do not hesitate to reach out to me or the council or any of us to what we can do to help. As I said before, I think the last one is that just because we can't fix everything doesn't mean we can't fix anything. So I'm excited to see where this goes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Heinz. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I hope you get better soon. So some comments and some questions and maybe some more comments. So first of all, really appreciate what you said today, what you said at your interview, which is that you want to make Tacoma one of the safest communities, if not the safest community in our, in our state. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, as well as your comments around focusing on the victims of crime as being your priority, which is reducing the number of victims of crime in this city, as well as your balanced approach, which also acknowledges the need for enforcement. I want to thank you for, there have been demonstrable improvements in the past several months, at least on what I've seen come through. So I want to applaud you and your departments worked on street racing, on reducing the number of armed robberies, on some of the great investigative work that's resulted in putting, you know, starting the justice process for individuals who engage in some really violent crimes in Tacoma. So from my perception, based on the information I get, right, you guys are working, the men and women of Tacoma Police Department are working really hard under your direction, and there is a change. And you can see it in the numbers. That being said, right, we still have, over last year, we're up 37% in crimes against persons and about 60% in crimes against property. And last year was not a good year in Tacoma. But what I would like to say is, or what I'd like to ask you about, you talked about the violent crime reduction strategy, which is great. I want to ask you about two things. And the first has to do with just the property crimes. I understand, you know, that the violent crimes is a priority, completely agree with you in terms of the Tacoma Police Resources. But what kind of efforts are we making, you know, are we going to make in terms of some of the property crimes, particularly, you know, I think of burglaries. So I was talking to the folks who own three apartment buildings in Tacoma and talking to them yesterday just about, look, you know, we're having burglaries every single day. One's in the stadium district, one's on the Foss Waterway, and they've got another one in Tacoma. Every single day, you know, and we can't get a response. And, you know, not only is it, you know, demoralizing and costing us money, we just, we just don't know what to do, right? And I understand you have limited resources, but when you, and that you've got to focus on violent crime. But when we look at that significant increase in property crime, you know, whether it's burglaries or motor vehicle thefts, what, how are you going to address that?
So when you, when you think about hotspot policing, I didn't elaborate on it, but when you talk about those small geographical areas, they're going to be identified as grids. And a grid is defined about 330 feet times 330 feet. So roughly, you're looking at the size of a football field. Where those grids are, I don't know right now because the data hasn't been fully analyzed. But the benefit of this plan is it will be really strict, and it will give us those really small areas where the most abundant crime is. Now, to your point, as it relates to property crime, think about what I said, the high visibility. An officer in that small geographical area will have a direct impact on burglaries, if you will, because the idea is his overhead lights are going to be on. He may or may not be out walking, but if he's out walking, he'll be highly visible and seen. Most people who break the law, break the law with the idea of escaping, getting away, not being held accountable. As I said, my officers aren't going to be stagnant. If a crime occurs in our presence, we're going to act on it and make the arrest that needs to be made. So that's how we're going to do it. I wish we could be everywhere all the time, but we cannot be. I've been visiting several businesses with some of the council members. And what I do is I have my CLOs do a follow up. And in that follow up, information is being shared that the businesses can help better protect themselves as it relates to maybe they need fencing, maybe they need a better camera system, maybe they need a better locking mechanism. Whatever that information is, based on the CLO's expertise, that information is being shared. So that's how we're going to do it. We have to be realistic and honest. We can't affect this whole big pie all at one time. But if we can affect these small geographical areas, then we can actually expand our territory and have a larger impact.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The second question I have just has to do with, and I don't know the answer to this. This is a trick question, and it certainly would be unique based on the circumstances. But we, there are many, many reports of, you know, individuals being, encountering kind of threatening behavior. So let me give you an example, and this is before your time. There was some students from the School of the Arts, which is based downtown Tacoma, who had repeated, repeated issues with an individual who appeared to be, you know, downtown quite a bit with either some major mental health and or substance use issues. And for whatever reasons, that resulted in a teacher getting punched in the face, that individual telling a student he was going to, student's mother, he was going to kill her daughter, and actually robbing one student, right? And I understand you talked about kind of the jail situations change. I'd like to understand that a little bit more. But here's an individual who, you know, allegedly engaged in criminal behavior. But there's other examples. We got an email yesterday, I think it's been shared with you, from Highland Hill Shopping Center, from the property owner saying, the same woman, she comes into the, you know, into the retail center, she threatens people, gentleman cut himself, then he's threatening other people. And, you know, security calls and the cops don't show up, or they do, but it takes a long time. So I'm just curious because I don't know the answer, really, honestly. What should we be doing? We've got individuals who obviously, you know, are going through some crisis that may or may not be related to mental health and substance use. But in, in certain circumstances are, you know, threatening people and engaging in bad behavior on a regular basis. You've got the police department focused on violent crime, as it should be, the more serious crime. But you have these issues that, I had a friend who was cornered in the stadium thruway by a gentleman who just threatened her, you know, another wife of a friend who was walking through Wright Park and punched, you know. So I mean, but we're, we have limited resources. I guess my question to you is, how do we, and it's not just for the police solution, but how do we, you know, as an organization, do things that are effective in those situations? Because it, you know, it seems to be spiking in many places. There's a gentleman, you know, walking from his place of work in the Dome District to the light rail the other day and got, what, punched in the face? Right? Hit over the head. So, you know, we're not, it's kind of a little bit different than what you were talking about, Chief, which is, you know, I think anyways, maybe you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but kind of, you know, people engage in criminal activities for, you know, in a very determined way. They're almost kind of more crimes of opportunity and or related to mental health, substance use issues. But they're problems. So, and people are calling the police, and, you know, you've only got so many people, and you've only got so much, you know, bandwidth in terms of how to address those issues. What do we need to do to tackle those issues?
Yeah. So your first question, as it relates to the jails in the past, and it's just been changed recently, and talking to Chief Jackson, who's over the jails, she shared with me that what probably has been lost is it just says, well, the jail's not accepting people. And there's really no explanation provided with that, which is really kind of unfair. The reality is, is that she's responsible for every prisoner there. And the CDC recommendations apply to her. So the jail was not set up, like many organizations, if you will, to actually operate under COVID because no one saw this coming. She had to do that. So in that, she had to be restrictive of who she could accept in jail as opposed to who she couldn't. So basically, it was those lower level offenses that the jail wouldn't accept. Violent felonies always accepted. Domestic violence always accepted. So that's kind of the narrative that's not really accurate. It wasn't that they didn't want to. It's just that she's responsible for the safety of the prisoners. So that has been changed. I think she released something a couple of weeks ago, that the jails are able to still operate safely, but the capacity, not physically has grown, but their availability as far as being able to, to house more people who break the law is better now than it was in the past. As it relates to what we enforce, I mentioned priority calls. We have a system, priority ones, twos, threes, and fours. Priority ones take precedent, and then priority twos and threes and fours. So it, even though the calls are dispatched based on that. So the problem could be is that when officer receives a dispatch call from the dispatcher, he could be en route. A priority that supersedes that come out, so he's rerouted to that call because it's a higher priority. So that's one instance. The other is, is that from what I understand with Southside 911, they will call the complainant back and ask questions. And based on that conversation, then they will either continue a officer or an officer be disregarded because there's nothing for the officer to respond to. For example, someone walks up and slaps you in the face, and you call, officer could be en route. Then he gets rerouted. So when they make a call back, you say, well, yeah, I was assaulted, but the suspect's not here anymore, et cetera, et cetera. Well, at that point, they may or may not send an officer. So that's kind of what I've discovered. It's not that officers don't want to respond, and they just say, well, I'm not going to that. That's not the case at all. It's based on, again, a call response prioritization system that's consistent throughout the nation. So it's not just in Tacoma. All policing works that way.
Thank you. So, but just to be clear, right, if there is just even a simple assault, let's say, is someone going to be, you know, depending on the situation, arrested and taken to county jail?
Yeah. If the, if the officer gets there through his investigation, and he can establish probable cause to believe that said person did commit the offense, then arrest can be made. Or based on the severity of that assault, it could be a citation that's issued. But something will be done.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate maybe not today, but at a later date, as we talk about kind of the mental health intervention options, too, as well, so that we just have a good, you know, we have a good holistic approach for how to deal with certain individuals who, you know, continue to have issues and in cases, in some cases, wreak havoc on other folks. And, you know, it's a direct result of significant substance use and mental health issues. But appreciate that we're, we're going to show up and we're going to address the situation. So I guess the last, just two comments real quick. You talked about communication. I'm happy to share, you know, this with my constituents, your plan, and I'm excited that you're here today because we've been anxiously awaiting the plan. I appreciate the communications that, that I get and that I see from the Tacoma Police Department. But I do think because of the, the time that the Tacoma's been through, you know, of recent, over the last few years, the more, and I know you're busy, Chief, but the more the Tacoma Police Department is out and about just communicating to the community your plan and, and, you know, the fact that we acknowledge the severity of the situation and that we're working, you know, hard and differently, really, to, to address situations. I think that will go a long ways and build in confidence. And then just the last piece would be just kind of what I asked Elizabeth earlier, you know, I'm, you're the expert in policing. So if you see policies or resource issues that, that you know need to be addressed to help you do a better job, please, please don't wait to share them with myself, I'm sure, and everyone else here, because, you know, none of us, I think, are experts in policing, and we're deferring to your expertise in supporting you and the women and men at TPD. So please let us know what we can do in this role to help make your job, help you do your job better. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Any other comments at this time? All right, Chief, just a couple, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bushnell.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I got my hand up there. Just the last thing, I need to turn it away. First off, thank you, Chief, so much for bringing this plan forward. You know, public safety is the prime directive for this council, for this community. And you're at the forefront of that. And so I appreciate you and all our men and women in blue that are out there doing the hard work to police. You know, we're, we're down 55 officers, but that doesn't mean that the, the work isn't being done. It's just being done by, by fewer officers, which means more overtime. It means more hardship on, on their families. And so I recognize that, and I really appreciate it. I spent over 11 years in the Marine Corps, and I understand what it means to put on that uniform every day and to risk your life to go out there to protect and serve our community. And so I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate that. And I also want to say I appreciate that, this plan, especially when it comes to community. It feels more like community-based policing that increase high visibility presence. Oftentimes, our officers are responding to folks that are having the hardest time of their life in that situation right there. And by having these high visibility patrols and being available to the community right then and there, when it's not necessarily their hardest time in their life, that's really how you build those relationships and really turn those communities around. I especially think about Hosmer in particular. We all know that Hosmer is, is a difficult part of our city. It has been a high rate of crime, violent crime in there. Oftentimes, we get these reports every single day, and almost every single day, there's always an incident, something going on in Hosmer. And I really appreciate this strategy, and I'm very supportive of it. One of the things that I would like to say also, just to my council colleagues, is this is just a part of a larger plan, right? We can help and support our officers to do this work, but we need to have the economic development to keep people from, you know, being, going into that crime in the first place. So when I think about Hosmer in particular, you know, I think about the, we have a lot of low-income apartments in that area. We have more affordable housing coming online in that area. But there's currently no plan on, on what we can do to bring mixed income, to bring economic development to that area. So I really would, would, would put this on, on my council colleagues, like when we look at these high crime areas- Like when we look at these high crime areas and these hotspots, there's more to it than just policing. And, and it's, part of it is economic development, making sure these neighborhoods are set up for success. It makes, that helps our officers to be able to respond to other parts of the city while we're reducing the amount of crime. And so I, I don't necessarily have any questions for you, Chief. Again, thank you so much for this, this plan. I'm looking forward to working with you and, and the community. And, and this is just a piece of the pie. And we as, as a council and as a community need to work together to complete the rest of this pie to make sure we're moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I really appreciate you acknowledging the hard work of the men and women of this police department. Because, you know, when I got here, morale was an issue. And I appreciate that council, the mayor, my boss have been very supportive of me and in terms supportive of the police department and just acknowledging the hard work that they do. So I thank you for that. I give the credit to them. It's not me. I, I get the, the luxury of talking, but it's really their dedication to this city. And they believe that this city can be the safest and that's their goal. So thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushnell. Deputy Mayor Ushka.
Thank you, Mayor Woodwards. I want to start by telling Councilmember Bushnell that I fully support his quest for safer Hosmer. I can tell you that there was a time that Salishan and District Four was one of the areas of highest crime. And with lots of layers of investment through THA and, and parks and schools and everything else, it's an entirely different neighborhood. So there's lots of opportunity there and I'm supportive of it. But that's not why I raised to speak. Chief, I, I've got community talking to me as, as this is going on and there's a question about hotspots in the east side, in the fourth district. Sometimes what happens because cops, pardon me, police officers haven't been able to be as responsive as they would like to. People aren't calling 911 anymore. And the concern that I have immediately when I hear that is that if you're using data based on 911 calls for hotspots, if areas aren't calling in or there's areas that are able to make more calls, is that where you go first or how is that data being, where's the data coming from?
So the data is coming directly from our CAD system, our RMS system, focus group meetings. So those are probably the primary sources of it. But what we want to do is encourage people to call 911. I recognize the frustrations because again, I've had my ear to the street. So I, I understand that it's frustrating when you call and it seems that the police aren't doing anything. One, that's not true. We are responding. We want to respond and we will continue to respond. But if we're unaware because you're not calling in, I ask you to please call. If it's not 911, it's 311. As we roll this plan out and you see an officer actually in that grid area, feel free to walk up to him, have discussions with him, share information with him. It's going to take that type of engagement for this plan to be successful. Because if you notice on the plan, I never put an expiration date because everything is based on principle. This is how we're going to do policing in Tacoma. So it's not going to be a year from now, we're not doing this anymore. We're going to always do hotspot policing. We're going to always do focus deterrents, place network policing, all of that stuff. It's going to work together synergistically so that we can have the impact that we're doing it. But I'm talking about the word changing behavior. I didn't want to just imply that we're changing behavior externally. That's an internal paradigm shift as well. The way we do policing going forward is how we're going to continue to do it as long as I'm here. And if you recall, my platform was always community engagement. And that was kind of the perfect storm for me, if you will. All of us working together for a common good. And that only starts if we're comfortable with communicating. So please call 911, 311, or just walk up and talk to an officer. You know, you'll find that we are people, we are approachable. And we may be able to understand that we have more in common than just me being a police officer and you being a resident.
Chief, I appreciate that a great deal. And as I was about to respond to this person who called 311 or 911, you've, they've now heard it directly from you. And I just, again, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Chief, I just have a couple of questions for you. One, I want to, I want to go back to one of the questions that Councilmember Daniels asked you. And that was kind of how, how this council can best support you. And I just, I just, I just want to again, kind of clear up, I think you, in the conversation there, in your response to Deputy Mayor Ushka, you kind of corrected some misinformation. And so I want to kind of correct some misinformation. Chief, do you have everything you need from us to do the? Okay. That just totally made me lose my thought in my head, but it's going to come back to me. Okay, Chief, so here's my, here's my, my question. In correcting kind of myth that is just out there, is there anything this council is doing or can't? First, is there anything this council is doing that's stopping our police department from fully doing what they need to do?
You know, Madam Mayor, I just, again, I'm going to go back to messaging. I think it's important, you know, in your address, you talked about being unified, unified one, being on the same team. That's the message that I've been given since I've been here and that's important. So even if we don't understand, it's better to come to me and ask directly or me come to you or me come directly to the city manager or the council as opposed to listening to people that maybe don't understand the full perspective of what we're trying to do. So that would be the biggest thing for me, making sure that we're saying the same thing because it's true and accurate and it's the actual direction that we're going into as opposed to talking to someone and then going out spreading what they say. And it's completely contradictory to what I have said and continue to say. So that would be the biggest thing. I, I think that, again, since I've been here, council has been extremely supportive. You've been supportive of me and the police department. And I would really like that to get out more, that you love the police department, that you support the police department. Because that's how, again, it helps me in building morale. And I think we've done a good job with taking morale upward and I would like to continue that.
We, Chief, and so would we. So I, I do want to, I do have, I want to say this and I do have another question for you. And you've heard other council members say it and it bears repeating that, that, you know, we talk about the fact that we're down a number of officers, but you have full funding right now to fill those positions. We're talking about now your police crime and what you'll need to be able to implement your police crime. You talk about, you know, hiring your team and making sure that you have everything in place that you need at the police department to have a well-run police department. But I just want to say that in addition to all of that and what you've heard from other council members, that this is a council that stands ready to stand either in front of you, beside you, behind you, and the entire police department to help you all achieve the goal of making Tacoma the safest city in the country. There's not a council member sitting at this dais that I have not talked to about the issue of crime and haven't clearly heard their support. There is not an email, though, that I don't get from community that doesn't, that doesn't express, I, I'd say 50 plus percent of the emails that I get are about crime in this community. And all of the stories that Councilmember McCarthy has shared and others have shared are the same stories that I hear every day. And I, and I do, I do want to even give an example of just some things that I've seen change. And my councilmates may agree with me. But I remember prior to, probably a month ago, that in every shift report, there were at least one or two burglaries. And I mean, every shift report for months. And then you all were able to capture a couple of people who you thought were responsible for a few of them. And what we also need to understand is just because they're only charged with a few of them at the time of booking, at the time they go through the entire process with the prosecuting attorney's office and with the police department, we may find that they're responsible for more than what they were initially charged. But unfortunately, that doesn't end up back into the paper. So when I think about the great work of our police departments a couple of months ago and getting those two people arrested, and I can tell you, I maybe once or twice in the last couple of weeks, not every day, but once or twice in a week, have I seen a robbery in, in, in the shift report. Now, I'm going to assume that that's because there aren't as many robberies happening, but one robbery is too much. But I just, I, I point that out to say that we, we, at least from the perspective of the reports, we are seeing, we are seeing a shift. And I think even in the, visiting the businesses in South Tacoma and, and last week on 84th and Hosmer, you know, having, being in, being in the presence of those business owners, you could hear that they're ready to stay, that they, they, they're not going anywhere, but they, they need our support. And I think having, again, continuing those conversations with businesses and the rest of our community. And that's why really, it's one thing I really appreciate about the crime plan is that while it is, while it is based on data to do the work, that data isn't solely provided by the police. That that data will be provided by community members and other organizations such as our Community Police Advisory Council. And I do want to take this moment to, to recognize Steve, who's the chair of that committee, who's actually in our audience, listening to your report today because they are so, they are, I would assume, they're, they're very pleased to hear this. He said he has, he has a reason to be here today. But, but they will be a partner with you. But there are lots of other organizations like CPAC that, that are really ready to support this plan and get Tacoma back on track. So then my other question for you is that I appreciate the fact that you said you're going to, you're going to update the plan at least every 90 days, if not sooner. Chief, do you have an idea at this point, and maybe it's just too soon, about what kind of metrics you'll use? Is it, because I was listening to something a couple of weeks ago that talked about the best metric for a police department to use is response time. That's how you can tell things are getting better because we can get to more calls. I don't know if that's the case, that's one person's opinion. But, but in things like response time or decrease in violent crime, how will you really measure whether or not we're headed down the right path and when we need to potentially shift what we're doing to do something else?
So I mentioned, Madam Mayor, that my goal was to win day by day. And you do that by having less victims. So that's the metrics for me, less victims. That's easy to count. It's not a formula that you have to go through. It's very, really that simple. So that's the, the best matrix. I completely disagree about response time because there's too many variables to response time, i.e. where you start the call from and how much distance you have to travel. Just for an example, directly impacts your response time. But if we can lessen the number of victims, I mean, that's the greatest win you can have because we're protecting people, we're saving lives and we're protecting them from injury, which is the goal. So victims, that's what is going to be my matrix, having less victims day by day. Again, understanding that some days we may have more victims. But if we can actually marry day by day together and get a week, that's a great win. We can turn that into two weeks, greater win, et cetera. So we're going to take a day by day approach and really pay attention to having less victims.
Thank you, Chief. And I should have said in addition to that, but I'm, I was glad to hear you repeat that yet again for everyone to hear that that is, that is the focus. So with that, Chief, I don't have any more questions. I don't see any more hands raised. I will say I know that we're going to look, we're going to look forward to once, once you've gotten some of those metrics and some of that data together. Obviously, we want to be transparent and share with people what we're doing. But we also want to, we also want to make sure that we can be complete in, in the work that the department is doing so that they can catch those out there who think Tacoma is a place to commit crime. I think I said it a couple of weeks ago, when the time is coming, Tacoma is not the place for you. And you're, you're, you're going to need to go somewhere else. So, go ahead, Chief.
Let me end with this. So the crime plan will be finalized in June. At that time, I'll bring it back in its entirety. I'll also have the criminologists either here in person or virtual. So they'll be available to ask more questions as it comes out. So this time in between now and then, we're still going to be meeting with our community members, really fine lining and streamlining our plan. We have done somewhat of a soft rollout. Again, that's just with our high visibility. So I'm glad that, that's noticeable. So that's a good sign as well. But I just didn't want to make it sound like this was the end of the plan and we're ready to roll it out in totality because we're not. We still have some analysts that are looking at it and really, again, trying to identify what the true issue is, not what we think it is, exactly where the, the location is and exactly who's actually the offender. So that's to come. So it should be in that PowerPoint under the timeline. Please highlight that because we'll come back with you with a complete package. Then my goal is to put that crime plan online so community will have access to it as well. Because I do believe in being transparent also. Again, we're talking about principles and this is how we're going to operate as the Tacoma Police Department.
You'll need to forgive us all. I just happened to look at the calendar and it would appear that yesterday was your 90, 90th day as our police chief. Was your three-month anniversary yesterday. So you've made it 90 days, Chief. And I think this is a great way to lift up your 90 days by bringing forward this very important plan or at least the, the concepts that will go into the plan that we will see in June. So congratulations, Chief, on your first 90 days. Look forward to continuing this work with you. I, I can say it because I've heard it from each one of my colleagues, you have our support as does the entire Tacoma Police Department. Every person who shows up to work on behalf of, of, of this community every single day. So we appreciate you all and I look forward to making, getting, getting on the path to making Tacoma the safest community in the world. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.